Okay, we're gonna start the organizational meeting for tonight. The Vermillion Local School Board District Board of Education Tax Budget Organizational Meeting at 5:45, Monday, January 9th, 2023. With the agenda, letter A is the tax budget.
The tax budget is complete and it'll be filed with the county auditor. Tax budget is again just to show the county that the district has a need for them to collect taxes. So it's been prepared, I'll send it out after this meeting and then we'll be good.
Perfect, thank you.
Next we'll go to the organizational part of the meeting. Do I go to the next page or that?
What's that?
Do I go right to the board business here or do I go to the next page?
Call order.
Call order, please.
Mr. Johnston.
Here.
Mr. Habermill.
Here.
Mrs. Step.
Here.
Mrs. Innes.
Here.
Mrs. Russell.
Here.
All members present?
Next we will have the pledge of allegiance, please stand.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, letter F is the oath of office.
No, we don't need to.
Board business, recommend a resolution to approve Eric...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry. Resolution to approve Eric Johnston, board president, to serve as president pro term for January 9th, 2023 organizational meeting.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Johnston.
Yes.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Step.
Yes.
Mrs. Innes.
Yes.
Motion approved, five zero.
Okay, elections of officers. Uh, one is the president.
I'll nominate Chris Habermill.
I'll second.
We have to ask the four of you to say yes to any others.
Nice.
Is there any other nominations for president?
Nope.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Johnston.
Yes.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Step.
Yes.
Mrs. Innes.
Yes.
Motion approved, five zero.
Nomination for vice president.
I'll nominate Shelley Innes for vice president.
I'll second.
Any other nominations?
Nope.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Johnston.
Yes.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Step.
Yes.
Mrs. Innes.
Yes.
Motion approved, five zero.
Number three is appoint Crystal Russell to serve as a legislative liaison with the Ohio School Boards Association for 2023.
I'll move.
I'll second. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Johnston.
Yes.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Step.
Yes.
Mrs. Innes.
Yes.
Motion approved, five zero.
Gap two, student liaison.
That's it?
Number four. Step.
Appoint Sarah Step to serve as a student achievement liaison with the Ohio School Board Association for 2023.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Johnston.
Yes.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Step.
Yes.
Mrs. Innes.
Yes.
Motion approved, five zero.
It works.
All right, number one, standing resolutions, new board.
Oh, he got moved.
Want to take over?
Yep.
Okay, letter I, standing resolutions. Recommend a resolution to approve the following standing resolutions for 2023. Number one, to establish the second Monday of each month at 6:00 PM for the day and time of the regular meetings in 2023 as listed on the agenda. Number two, designate the weekly photo journal as the official newspaper. Number three, direct the treasurer to provide copies of the minutes in the last two days prior to the, in the last meeting, two days prior to the regular meeting and waive reading of the minutes if set as done. Number four, authorize the treasurer to pay on abstracts and invoices monthly salaries and bills within the approved appropriations. Request from the area and the state county auditors advances on tax settlements as monies are collected. Invest the funds in the district as they are available. Establish funds as necessary when requested by law or auditor of state. Approve student activity funds, works, statements and budgets. Open and read bids immediately after the time for filing bids is expired. Number five, authorize the superintendent or his designated to act as a purchasing agent, act as a federal programs coordinator, act as a compliance officer for the Equal Education Opportunities Act Title IX and the 1972 Civil Rights Act. Family and Medical Leave Act, Bureau of Workers' Compensation, Public Employment Risk Production Program, Individuals with Disabilities Act, Americans with Disabilities Act, 504 Coordinator. Approve the emergency and temporary employment of personnel in compliance with policy. Accept resignations of personnel on behalf of the Board of Education. Provide coordination of required asbestos inspections. Act as a safety coordinator. Approve the use of school buses within state local rules. Approve the use of volunteer and/or employees' personal automobile transport students to and from school or school-sponsored activities. Number six, authorize the building principals to sign contracts such as studies for student activity contracts, student pictures, school annuals, athletic contests and the like. Number seven, appoint the superintendent or his designated as the Board of Education's hearing officer for appeals of suspensions and expulsions of students. Number eight, authorize the appointment of the board's representative to act as designated through the Board of Education to hear student expulsion appeals. Number nine, establish a service fund in the amount allowed by law of $3,500 for Board of Education within the general fund for the remainder of the fiscal year 2023 and fiscal year 2024. Number 10, appoint Dr. David Howell to serve on the Vermillion City Parks and Recreation Board for 2023. Number 11, authorize the superintendent to approve participation in state federal programs and grants. Authorize him to appoint designees to represent Vermillion for 2024. Number 12, authorize the treasurer to submit an alternative tax budget for fixed fiscal year 2024 to the voting commission in a timely fashion. Number 13, appoint the following firms as legal counsel as listed below. Number 14, authorize the treasurer to serve as the designated of the members of the Board of Education for public records training as required by law.
I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Johnston.
Yes.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Step.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Innes.
Yes.
Motion approved, five zero.
Organizational meeting is adjourned, the regular meeting will start at 6:00 PM.
Pledge of allegiance. Welcome to the Vermillion Local School District Board of Education Regular Meeting for Monday, January 9th. This is a meeting of the Board of Education in a public purpose of conducting school district's business not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated on the agenda.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill.
Here.
Mr. Johnston.
Here.
Mrs. Russell.
Here.
Mrs. Step.
Here.
Mrs. Innes.
Here.
All members present?
Okay, so we'd like to start our meeting with some recognition. We have all of our student citizens of the month, please.
Everybody can rise for the pledge of allegiance. Next one, turn around and pick the flag. Yes, start off when you're ready.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll continue on with the meeting. Recognizing is always the best part of the meeting. So, item five on the, item five on our agenda is the student liaison.
Okay, so today we have Alan Sealy with us and he is, are you the one who started the musical? They're having a musical at the middle school for the first time, I think, ever, which is really cool, Bye Bye Birdie. So he's brought some students to come up and talk about it.
Hi, good evening. My name is Mr. Sealy. I am the drama club advisor for Saylor Middle School. I decided to bring some friends with me tonight just to share with, share with you a little bit about the drama club and some current productions going on.
Good evening. We are here to represent S U S Drama Club and share with you why drama club and its productions are important to Saylor Way Middle School. I am very happy to be in the middle school drama club. It has shown me how important my passion of singing is and I'm very grateful to have a lead role.
When I first joined drama club, I was just made for fun, but then after my first year in my first production, Stacks of Wax, I fell in love with drama club and that's why I'm still in it now.
First of all, I'm Brady Myers and I would like to thank everyone, the school board, Mrs. Bartman, Mr. Sealy for putting this together. It's really important to me and sports are a big part of my life, of my life and music just opens up the other side of the brain and everything and I feel like that's very important, everything you do. And then there's like music. I love being able to express myself in many different ways with all my friends involved. I love, I love being who you really want to be on stage, just having fun. And then again, thank you to everyone who's been a part of this and as very famous Conrad
Hello, I am Harper Step and I am very, very grateful to be playing Mrs. Megan Pearson in musical Bye Bye Birdie. It is my second year in drama club and last year I was Amelia Earhart in the play Stacks of Wax. I am very grateful.
We are excited to announce that this year's S U S Drama Club musical will be Bye Bye Birdie.
When a teen out of Conrad and Birdie gets drafted into war, the whole town turns
One lucky girl selected at random will get the chance for the lifetime to give the rock star his one last kiss. With that girl, when that girl chosen happens to be from a small town in Ohio, that whole town gets upside down.
Having a celebrity in town shapes up relationships, family and feelings.
Chaos ensues in this family-friendly comedy.
Performances will be February 24th and 25th at 7:00 PM.
Tickets will be $5 for adults and $2 for children.
We look forward to seeing you at our show. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming.
Okay, item six, the legislative report.
The 135th General Assembly began on January 3rd. Several education bills that were passed during the leading duck session have been signed into law by Governor Mike DeWine. First one, and there's several of them I've chosen too that I feel we need to know about, House Bill 45. This bill will provide approximately $1.7 billion in elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund. The master funds appropriation authority to schools as requested by the Ohio Department of Education. It also will increase the Disadvantaged People Impact Act, raise in for fiscal year 2023 from 14% to 33.3% and provides $112 million for additional grants under the school safety grant program. And House Bill 554, this bill requires the State Board of Education to issue two-year temporary educator licenses to applicants with expired professional teacher certificates and professional educator licenses as long as certain requirements are met. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Item seven, public participation on agenda items only. Each participant is allowed three minutes to speak and it's all the time allotted. For public participation is 30 minutes. Please register your name, address, topic and group affiliation if applicable. Anyone for public participation on agenda items? Item A, presentations. I'd like to invite Athletic Director Andy Stillman and State Representative Joe Millar Thank you so much. I'd like to introduce Representative Joe Millar, who's got some combination stuff for us.
Thank you, Andrew. Thank you, Board, for the opportunity to always recognize our youth and their success well. And today we have Gracie Starkovit. I believe Maddie Stoudt's not here, but Gracie, if you're here, please come on up. I had to stand right here so everybody can see who I'm talking about, right? So a member of the 2022 girls volleyball team here at Vermillion High School. Gracie has, and Maddie, so when I talk, we talk about both of them because they have both had success in the volleyball season. It was great to hear as a member of the volleyball team, you combine your talent, your competitive spirit, your ideals of good sportsmanship, being a good teammate and establish yourselves a truly exceptional athlete. And with admirable dedication, you worked diligently toward obtaining ultimate proficiency in the sport volleyball and as a result, you received a 2022 All District Six First Team, if I have this right, honors. But in addition to that, you had All Ohio Division Two Honorable Mention. Your unwavering commitment to this excellence has earned you the prestige of not just your own individual who feel about that success, but your family, your community, high school, your coaches, everybody involved, your state rep. We're very excited to see the success that Gracie, you and Maddie have had in the season. And although my district has changed, this is the last presentation unless I'm invited by your new state rep, Representative Big Stein, to join him on a combination. But whatever we can support our youth in their achievements, I'm always there, being a house teacher and coach. It's very easy for me to come up here and get excited about this. I appreciate Athletic Director Andrew Stillman, over the last four years, we've had the opportunity to do this a few times. And if there's any chance or any time, regardless of whether you're in my district or not, please let me know. We should always be celebrating our youth and positive things that are happening today in today's society. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and, I'm not sure, there's the camera over there. We'll move that way for a moment. I think there's some pairs here. All right, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Ask that to Maddie as well, okay? That's a lovely congrat. Thank you, Board, I appreciate it. Good luck with the year.
All right, thank you for that. Congratulations, Gracie. Item nine, superintendent's report. Doctor Hough.
Yes, so generally as I was recognition month and I have this proclamation I'd like to read for the board. Whereas our community values a quality education as a vital stop along the pathway to success for our children. Whereas Eric Johnston, Chris Habermill, Sarah Step, Crystal Russell and Shelley Innes contribute greatly to this community through their service on the Vermillion Local School Board of Education. Whereas these local decision makers set the policies and procedures to govern all aspects of school district operation. Whereas the school board keeps attention focused on progress toward the school district's growth and maintains a two-way communication link with all segments of the community. Whereas these school board members are serving our community with integrity, honor and commitment to our children's future. Now therefore, I, Dr. David Howell, do hereby declare my appreciation to the members of Vermillion Local School Board and proclaim the month of January 2023 as school board recognition month of Vermillion Local Schools. I hereby urge all citizens to join me in recognizing the dedication and hard work of local school board members and in working with them to build and sustain an education system that meets the needs of both today's and tomorrow's children. So thank you all for being willing. First of all, it's always a scary thing to put yourself out there for elected position and then there's an awful lot of work that happens, you know, behind the scenes that people know nothing about. So it's always a challenge to serve an elected office. So thank you for doing that for our community. Thank you.
Item 10, treasurer's recommendations. Thank you. Number one, recommend a resolution to approve the financial report for December 2022 and that's attachment A.
I'll move.
All right, first we'll take a look at the general fund revenue and we'll do this by month. So through the month of December, the district received 11.2 million in general fund revenue compared to 11.15 million at this time last year and 11.7 million in fiscal year 21. Overall, the district is on pace to collect its historical average revenue in the general fund. Moving on to food service, through the month of December, the district received 361,000 in general, I'm sorry, in food service revenue compared to 429,000 in fiscal year 22 and 175,000 in fiscal year 21. Despite food service not being 100% subsidized by the government like last year, our revenue has been higher than forecasted and hopefully will continue to do so. Moving on to all funds, through the month of December, the district received 12.3 million in all funds compared to 12.1 million at this time last year and 12.6 million in fiscal year 21. Again, same thing with the general fund. For all of our funds, the district is on pace to collect its historical average revenue. Moving on to the expenditure side for the general fund through the month of December, the district has expended 14.3 million from the general fund compared to 12.8 million at this time last year and 12.8 million in fiscal year 21. So far this year, the district has spent 825,000 more in salaries than it did the previous year. Part of that increase was moving staff from a bi-weekly to a bi-monthly pay as well as negotiated increases. Also, our retirement and insurance benefits have increased, creating an additional $216,000 more this year compared to the previous year. Also, purchase services, they're 316,000 more than they were at this time last year. The main driver for this is because the district entered into an additional lease for Apple products for grades K through five, I believe, where they bring on an additional lease that we didn't have in the previous year. And then also, we had to repair the baseball and softball fields for a cost of $264,000. There is an asterisk with that though, that 264,000 will be reimbursed back by the athletic boosters. But from our books this year, just we're spending more this year than we had in previous years. And also on the capital outlay side, we purchased a school bus for 109,000. In total, the district has spent 1.5 million more this fiscal year than it has last fiscal year and for a lot of those reasons mentioned above there. Moving on to food service, through the month of December, the district has expended 438,000 in food service compared to 410,000 at this time last year and 288,000 in fiscal year 21. Negotiated salary increases and the cost of food are the main drivers for this increase. This administration will need to closely monitor the health of the food service fund throughout the course of the year. And then looking at all funds through the month of December, the district has spent 16.4 million compared to 14.2 at this time last year and 14.0 in fiscal year 21. Much like the general fund, the district is on pace to spend more this fiscal year than its historical averages and it's for reasons mentioned in the general fund there. And lastly, we'll take a look at cash. Through the month of December, the district has a total of 15.7 million in cash in the general fund compared to 16.2 at this time last year and 14.9 in fiscal year 21. Moving on to food service, through the month of December, the district has a total of 301,000 in cash compared to 200,000 at this time last year and 60,000 in fiscal year 21. do have, our athletic fund is currently negative thirty-nine thousand. Our E-Tech connectivity is negative twenty-five hundred dollars. That twenty-five hundred negative will be reimbursed, though. And then all the five hundred accounts that we have here, those are all of our federal accounts, those will all be reimbursed as well, but currently, they're sitting negative. And on the investment side, through the month of December, the district has earned a total of one hundred and twenty-six thousand on interest compared to eighty-two thousand at this time last year. It's a difference of forty-three thousand dollars, or fifty-three point three percent more in interest earnings this year than last year at this time. Any questions? Call the roll. Mr. Haybermill?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mrs. Innes?
Yes.
Mrs. Russell?
Yes.
Mrs. Step?
Yes.
Motion approved, five zero. Number two, approve the donation of two hundred dollars from Eric Brucker to the soccer fund in memory of Cliff Parsons.
I'll move.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Haybermill?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mrs. Innes?
Yes.
Mrs. Russell?
Yes.
Mrs. Step?
Yes.
Motion approved, five zero. And number three, approve the donation of four hundred dollars from Darren Schultz for the Dr. Darren T. Schultz Thirst for Knowledge Scholarship.
I'll move.
I'll second. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Haybermill?
Yes.
Mrs. Innes?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mrs. Russell?
Yes.
Mrs. Step?
Yes.
Motion approved, five zero. And number three, approve the donation of four hundred dollars from Darren Schultz for the Dr. Darren T. Schultz Thirst for Knowledge Scholarship.
I'll move.
I'll second. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Haybermill?
Yes.
Mrs. Innes?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mrs. Russell?
Yes.
Mrs. Step?
Yes.
Motion approved, five zero. Thank you.
Okay, item eleven, the consent agenda. The superintendent and the treasurer recommend that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda items. Action by the Board in, Board of Education in adoption of the consent agenda items means that all items are adopted by one single motion unless a board member, the treasurer, or the superintendent requests that any such item be removed from the consent agenda and voted on separately. Item one, minutes of the December twelfth, two thousand twenty-two regular meeting, attachment B. Item two, approve the revisions to the district policies and accompanying guidelines for first read, policy five one one one, attachment C. Item three, approve the Lorraine County ESC and out of district LEA Title One Non-Public School Program Agreement Pooling, ESEA one 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 seven, for the two thousand twenty-two twenty-three school year, attachment D. Item four, approve the employment action, resignation William Beck Bus Driver effective January sixteenth. Item five, one-year certified contract for two thousand twenty-two twenty-three school year to the following as listed below. Item six, one-year additional duties contract for the two thousand twenty-two twenty-three school year, two, as listed below. Item seven, one-year classified contract for the twenty-two twenty-three school year to Donald Lower's Bus Driver. Item eight, pay Denver Schaefer and Claudia Wilson five hundred each from the girls' basketball donation fund for aiding with Sailor Way Girls Basketball. And pay Gerald Western five hundred from the girls' basketball donation fund for coordination and organization of a Sailor Youth Girls Basketball Program. Item nine, pay John German and Dale Surgeon one thousand each out of the youth wrestling donation fund for coordinating the youth wrestling program. Item ten, pay Tony Hugo five hundred out of the bowling donation fund for helping with boys bowling. Item eleven, pay Cody Rice for writing and posting post-game reports to the website and social media for Sean Ellis two hundred dollars for keeping statistics for boys' basketball and the boys', from the boys' basketball donation fund. Item twelve, any items that need to be removed from the agenda?
Do you need the one?
Yeah, I do. I'm gonna, for the employment actions, item number five, I want to pull Emily Rich and put her as a separate agenda item. She's a relative. Call the roll, please.
We need a motion. I'll move. I'll second. That's okay.
Two motioned.
Shelley, second.
Crystal?
Crystal. Yes.
Now call the roll, please. Mr. Haybermill?
Yes.
Mrs. Innes?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mrs. Russell?
Yes.
Mrs. Step?
Yes.
Motion approved, five zero.
Okay, our removed agenda item is a one-year certified contract for the two thousand twenty-two twenty-three school year to Emily Rich Reading Specialist.
I'll move.
I'll second. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Haybermill?
abstain.
Mrs. Innes?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mrs. Russell?
Yes.
Mrs. Step?
Yes.
Motion approved, four zero and one abstention.
Item thirteen, dates and locations of upcoming board meetings. Meetings will be held in the Vermillion High School Commons, twelve fifty Sanford Street, Vermillion unless otherwise noted. There's a regular meeting on Monday, February thirteenth at six P.M., Monday, March thirteenth at six P.M., and Monday, April tenth at six P.M. Item fourteen, public participation, public participation section of the Board of Education Agenda specifically designed for the public to address the board with their compliments, concerns, ideas, and/or questions. The board welcomes your comments. If you wish to address the board regarding a problem, the board will remind you of two things. First, your comments should be factual and respectful of the rights of others. Second, before coming to the board with a specific problem, you should first address the problem with the appropriate teacher, staff member, or administrator. This meeting of the Board of Education in public is for the purpose of conducting school business. Would anyone like to speak? Let Mr. Jones go first. Decided today, Mr. Jones?
Thank you. If that's, he was so important, we should have a very nice to you, sir.
Good point.
So, I'm here today because I have a question for the superintendent. And the question is, do our students within your building, Vermillion students, have due process rights?
Sir.
They do, okay. So, I was informed by my daughter, and she was part of an assembly where kids are going to be suspended based on suspicion of drug use. No proof, no evidence, just suspicion. And I think that's in direct violation with what you just told me, sir.
I know what you're talking about.
So there was an assembly today with the eighth grader where Mr. Lucasco told the students that he was going to start suspending them for suspicion of drug use, or if they were in the bathroom and there was a vape detector gun was coming off and they were under suspicion that they would start suspending students.
I wasn't here. I was gone today at meetings, so I have no idea what Mr. Lucasco said.
Well, I think they probably should get a hold of Mr. Lucasco since he held an assembly today.
Did you ask Mr. Lucasco?
I have been in this building many different times and spoke with each individual board member, superintendent.
Did you ask, I'm talking about this specific question. You know, when, when...
I've been told by Mr. Lucasco directly that they don't, you can search them, you can do as what he pleases.
I'm asking about this specific question that you're asking me about today in the assembly. When the board president reads the statement here, it says you should speak to the teacher, the staff member, the administrator first.
That kind of is so little, right? Those words is out of order.
We're not speaking today.
You're absolutely out of order with this joke.
So my question was, did you ask, have you talked to Mr. Lucasco about this specific question?
I have a question response. Are the Facebook comments turned off on your Facebook page, sir?
Yes.
Okay, well, it seems like you harbor an environment of unfriendly or hostile input from parents because you won't let us speak our minds. You don't listen to what parents say. Yeah, you put your hands out, but you weren't here today and you don't know about this important area of meeting that your principal had, who is searching students on a regular basis and now is suspending them. This is a problem. The kids don't have transitions during class. They can't go to the bathroom. They can't get a drink of water.
Not true. I watch them get to the bathroom and get drinks and water every day.
Sure. They're allowed to go to the bathroom in between the classes that they have. That's a lie. That's a bold-faced lie.
They do.
That's a bold-faced lie. They're not allowed to use the restroom there. They're denied access to the restroom, and they're not allowed to drink water, all right? There's none.
It's just not true.
It's just not. And it's a, that's a policy that you harbor, all right? That you allow to happen in this building, all right? Denying it is not. I'll get on a camera and I'll show you. Is that what you want, sir? Or you want to accept the fact that this is happening inside your building and you're the one that is starting all of this and continuing it? It's your policy. You set the policy. They go around, you set it, and you make sure that it happens. Is it not? Are the kids allowed free transition in between classes?
I just answered the question a few minutes ago.
You're saying yes?
Yes.
So that would be lying at a public meeting, all right? Okay. Well, I have a problem with my child specifically being told that she can't use the restroom and then my niece being told that she can't use the restroom. I have a problem with you lying straight to my face, sir. It's not acceptable. This policy needs to change. Covid's long gone. It's time to loosen up the school a little bit and let the kids just be kids. The lockdown drills, the culture of fear needs to stop. Thank you.
All right.
Hello, good evening. I want to start off by introducing myself. I'm about five weeks in Vermillion. All of my life, I graduated from PHI. I'm a single mother to an eighth grader that attends PHI. My child came home Tuesday, January third with this screenshot of what you guys are calling a hate list that was made on TikTok. I myself believe this to be more than a hate list. My son and my niece and nephew was on said list. I took this profoundly serious as I'm sure every parent who has had their child on one of these lists did as well. I was unaware of more than one list prior to my child being on the list. Before Christmas, the food broke out from my house and my child did not attend school. So we had no clue about these lists thirdly, which to me is alarming to itself. No one from the school district notified parents to inform them of the potential threat that this has been done and left to the parents' discretion whether or not they felt this was a threat. I assure you that the one my child was on felt like very much a threat. I do not feel this is okay or to, okay or fair to the students or parents who were not notified. The parents should be very aware of any threats made. The first step I took after I saw this was to sit down with my child and talk about the list. My child informed me of the child's name that this impact was made under. My child then began to become very extremely insatiable, in various areas of the head, of how they would escape the classroom, if that kid brought a weapon to school to hurt them. This has become very prevalent, that it is a threat to my child and induced panic. I began to call my child and stated that I would try to contact the kid's parents that made the list. I sent the parent a Facebook message stating I wanted to talk with your parent and discuss, you know, call me on my number, and I had an urgent issue, you know, regarding this. I, at that time, was talking to my mother, who was on the assistant principal of the school at the time. I informed him of the issue, asked him the best ways to handle the situation, and sent him the superintendent an email and a copy of the screenshot and the ten students who were on it. I spoke to the assistant principal for about fifteen minutes and I hung up. And then I called Vermillion Department of Power for the list. After I hung up the phone with the BTP, the parent called me. I explained the situation and stated that I wanted to talk with your parent about the situation. I was in a confrontation at that time either. And I informed that parent that I would not have any communication with them and I did not, and I would rather take them in the mouth, but I closed that today. How that parent reacted showed me exactly how the child would react to the situation. As I remained calm and trying to get this situation sorted out, I was told I was lying and that their child never would do this and that they did not even have a big thought. That alarmed me even more that her parents had no idea about what is on their phone, apps, and social media. Immediately after I hung up with the parent, the BTP was knocking on my door. I gave them my report, sent them an email with pictures of the list. They said they would have the school resource officer contact the school immediately and warn me. I kept my child home from school the following day as the investigation was supposed to take place, and I felt it would be safer for my child as my child absolutely felt completely unsafe. And my child ran scenarios through their head all night of how to escape immediate danger if that kid stole a weapon in class and they would have to escape without bodily harm. To save this induced panic was an understatement. I was very much upset about this as well as worried, but hid this from my child as best as I could so they knew what was being dealt with and not feeling unsafe at school replaced dangerous awareness of danger. Inducing panic is against the law, understandable how revised Code two-nine-one-seven-point-three line. The school found under three hours that this list would have meant it was not a threat, which I am sure me and other parents whose children have been on said list feel the complete opposite. What I got out of this when I called the school to see what was going on with the investigation was there was no threat because no bodily harm was done to the student. But what about emotional anguish, the psychological damage? So is it going to take a student that makes one of these lists hurting someone, so this can be deemed a threat or given recognition aside of their bullying? The school has zero tolerance for bullying, but it is okay to create a list of students and staff threatening them inside the room. This makes no sense to me. When I asked what this case punishment was, I was broke locked and stated, "We cannot disclose this information to you." When I asked if that kid explained what my child did wrong and that they could put on this list, I was again broke locked. "We cannot disclose this information to you." Then I asked what can be disclosed and how my child can return to school under your care without me feeling any worry and any fear. I was again broke locked and asked if I wanted to, my child comes that classroom. Why should my child have to move classrooms? Why are we not moving our kids to a place to the school in classrooms and putting them in one classroom together so they can be closely monitored as they have technology at their fingertips and obviously this is happening in our community? Why should we blame the victims and make the victims feel they must rearrange their schedules if something they did not do? Why does this mean like you're going to add, if these people had on hand with their behavior and inducing panic inside the building? Why did I have an option, not, I didn't have an option to crush targets? Why were there no solutions for the parents and the children who were threatened? These kids are inducing panic and it should be taken very seriously. Harlem, Florida, Charnin, Ohio, Uvalde, Texas, Oxford, Michigan, all have premeditated threats and signs of the major tragedies. Sure, these threats, these threats here should not be taken lightly at all. All these schools swept it under the rug as not a immediate threat until it was. All the communities, I am sure, said this would never happen here until it did. I am my child's advocate. I will sit up here all day long and I will give a speech here before I sit in front of a jury, as well, a judge and a murderer, and giving a victim in the next state. I want this to be taken serious. I want to also know what happened to actual punishment, expulsion, suspension, ZH, communities are risking recognizance or behavior is completely unacceptable. The parent should face punishment too. How do you not know what your kid is doing? How do you not have any sort of punishment for your child's actions? We as a community need to know the school is going to take these situations seriously and protect our children, the victims. We also need to have proper steps taken that coincide with the seriousness of the threats made against our children. I think you guys would...
Can I respond to you?
Yes.
So, you saw us send an email out recently about these lists. So, right before Christmas break, the week before Christmas break, we had a couple of lists created. They called them different things. They didn't call them kill list. They didn't call them, you know, hate list. They just, they were different, they had different terms for them. And I can tell you, and we had another, we've had another one since then. And so I can tell you that discipline, I cannot, your students' discipline record is confidential, okay? You wouldn't want me to tell anyone.
I would like to, overall.
Yeah, so that's what I'm gonna... Yeah, so that's what I'm gonna do.
If it happens, like, hey, you're gonna get expelled. But once, you're getting suspended. If you're doing it twice, you're getting expelled.
Yeah, that's what I'm gonna do.
Parents, we should be able to press charges.
That's what I'm gonna.
This isn't inducing panic, it's cyberbullying. It's all the things that you guys do against.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna tell you. They have been treated with the strongest discipline possible within the school. I can tell you that each one of these students that has dealt with us has gone through the strongest discipline that we are, by law, allowed to apply.
I appreciate that and I appreciate you guys' attention.
Our assistant principal, so when they're telling you, our principal, when they're telling you that they can't tell you exactly what happened or what they did, it's simply because the law makes those things confidential for each student. So they can't simply tell you what disciplinary action they take on any particular student, okay? So it's not they're trying to cover up. It's just they're not allowed to do that, or they would be sued for breach of confidentiality, okay? I appreciate your concerns, though.
So I'm happy and good. Just gonna follow up with her as well, because my kid is on one list. And before coming back from break, he's like, I don't want to go back to school. I don't know what this kid's gonna do. So it's very true that this is inciting panic. And as a survivor of a mass shooting, I understand and see a lot of the red flags that a lot of the administration, a lot of the board members are ignoring. There's brought to my attention, you know, that we would much rather have funding for a new football stadium instead of clothing and putting that funding into mental health resources for our kids. Because, yes, we think Vermillion is a perfect peaceful little town and nothing ever happens to us here. But that's in itself a red flag. And I know what red flags are as someone who's dealt with mental illness and dealt with the incident that I dealt with. I know what the red flags are and I know they're deeply colored. And I know that a lot of parents are not having the voice to express these issues and be heard. Because it took me calling the school to talk to the vice principal about what the incident was. I never got it. And I think in itself, that's a problem. And then on top of the fact that since we've been here, I think here about nine years, since fourth grade, my kid has been bullied. And it's constantly, the constant thing is, oh, we're dealing with it. We have a policy or we're taking care of it. But then my kid's coming home, sixth, seventh grade, and I have to give him therapy because he wants to kill himself. So the policies are not enough. They're not strict enough. They're not tight enough. You're not aware of the red flags. You're not paying attention to what the parents are saying. And it's getting to a point that kids would much rather deal with themselves or drop out of school because they're afraid to go to school, to deal with the bullies. They're dealing with a lack of administration getting involved in these things. A five-day suspension for someone writing a list is not enough. That's not gonna teach that kid anything other than, oh, look, I got away with it. I got a free five-day vacation. You know, the parents are not being listened to. We're not, I mean, it's not. I mean, we've been here, like I said, eight years, and my kid's in eighth grade now. Dealing with bullying for straight years. Numerous conversations with administration, like, this is what's going on. This, I'm having to get him therapy. What are you gonna do about it? You know, and enough is enough where we need to have a voice as parents. Be like, hey, this is what my kid's going through. This is the exercise I have to take to make sure that he can function and go to school and enjoy school and not have to deal with any of this stuff. I mean, he stood up and called out the kid that drew up this, and now he's fearful of retribution. You know, it's like, well, what are you gonna do about that part? You know, kids are not gonna, are too scared to step up and say anything because they're afraid of retribution. Because we're slapping these kids on the wrist and saying, oh, three days suspension. You know, these kids are not taking this seriously. And what is it gonna take for these kids to take it seriously? And it's the parents and it's the adults and the administration saying, one shot, you're done. Like, we don't do this. You know, and I'm like, I'm really frustrated, you know, as I employ a lot of kids in this high school and I have a lot of conversations with what actually happens in this high school that a lot of administration overlook. And the amount of child pornography that's passed around, the drugs that are passed around, the abidingness problem. I mean, you really cannot know what's going on in school. I think you're really out of touch. The policies are out of touch. The red flags are there. And I'm over it, I'm frustrated, and, you know. So my kid's telling me that. He has to go to school and faces that ahead. And that's frustrating. You know, and I want to know, as a parent, what are you gonna do about it? Are we gonna start taking this stuff more seriously? Are we gonna wait until we have to have them work?
Thank you. Thank you for taking the time and thank you for your comments. Just, in my opinion, and I'll let Dr. Howell talk, but the district does take it seriously. And you're right, there's probably things that happen that people don't know about or go unheard of or whatever. And for a kid to stand up and call someone out or for a kid to report something is brave and it's good. I think the important thing to know is that over the last year or so, the district has poured a lot of resources into mental health and continues to do so and wants to do so. There's, I mean, I know you mentioned, like, you know, we're worried about a football stadium. We're not really worried about a football stadium. We have a good football stadium. We're more worried about the kids in the building, okay? And that's what's important. And I don't know if you have anything to expand on, you know, as far as resources, but.
We, I had communicated to folks, I think we had other communications from the administrators, that we've added two mental health therapists in this district in the last year. So a year ago, in January, a mental health therapist was added, and then another one was added this past August. So I'm not aware of any other school districts having full-time mental health therapists, okay? And that is a recognition that there are issues. It's a nationwide problem. I'm sure if you watch the news, the mental health crisis among teens is a national issue. I'm not seeing a district, honestly, in my experience, has put more resources into that than Vermillion has up to now. So hopefully you would be willing to take advantage of those resources. We have two excellent mental health therapists that could work with your child if you wanted that to happen. You can contact your school counselor and they can make that, they can set that up for your child if that's what you want to happen. We definitely are concerned about that issue. And can we use eight mental health therapists? Yeah. And, you know, there's not enough resources to do all the things that we like to do. And the schools can't do all of that. And, you know, going back to these lists, that's one of the reasons I sent the email to the parents is we need the parents to help communicate to their students that we can't be doing these things. We can't be putting people's names on lists, posting on social media, or just even passing them around in the school. So we do ask for a partnership with the parents, also helping communicate to their children what's acceptable, what's unacceptable, as well, in their own homes, as well as in school. So I know that doesn't answer all your questions. Yes, there's a myriad of issues and challenges that school districts, public school districts face every day. My experience with our administrators is they do take them seriously. I can tell you, tomorrow, we're gonna have part of our sixth or seventh expulsion hearing. I don't believe that that's been the case here in the past. I don't believe students have been expelled, but they're being expelled now. So we are, and that's the most that we can do, discipline-wise, for a student, is expulsion from school. I thought years ago, to change the law to allow us to do additional things with expulsion to extend it for dangerous students. And it got voted down in the state legislature. So we are restricted in what we can do, but we are applying the law as extremely as we can for students that are dangerous.
Thank you.
It is public transportation, however, if you order, I can just be get a public meeting. I don't think that's a question. Anyways, you guys know me, Kathleen Fire, living in Vermillion. What's so funny to me, and it wasn't a speech today, I'm the vice of counsel, but I'm gonna say something because I think it needs to be said. You gave my daughter a school suspension for sending a text message on a bus. And five minutes before she got off, continued the conversation. And you give these guys five days of detention, of suspension for sending a death threat? And then you're expelling kids for smoking weed or smelling like weed? Because we all know this, a lot of kids talk. And you give them five days of suspension for that? And you also induce this culture of school shootings, having not with the lockdown, with the money for the lockdown, with all the extra little stuff you guys have been doing around here with that. You incite, you welcome that kind of, that kind of speech, like, you know, remeshure, remeshure? You guys have been talking about that the last year? You actually have, we're gonna update your class, we're gonna do this, we're gonna fund you for this. Yes, you have, and the kids, and you've been practicing lockdowns at the middle school. So do you not think the kids see that too? Do you not think that influences what they think about? A little bit?
It should.
How, 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 how?
It should, it should. It should one hundred percent.
Well, Andrew, but you've been great, you did very watch that pass.
One second.
This is my time, so I call, I call, send my time down.
It should one hundred percent influence what they think about.
I already said, we're in a public meeting, as much as you guys would just say, this is a price for school and it's bad. Excuse me, sir. Two men fight their cultures. You suspend my daughter for a text message, but then you make excuses for five days. You're expelling kids for drug use, but you have a five-day suspension here. You do not apply your five-odd statute. You do not apply your five-odd statute, and you do not apply your policy statute. Then you put my other daughter, which I haven't brought up yet, in suspension without even calling. After her uncle died. Her uncle died two days before. She had a slip-up in that port, and you put her in school. You're so worried about kids' mental health, aren't you? You don't even call the parent. And I'm working on my end about that. So you guys will be hearing from my interns very quickly. Big case, gonna be great, because all you guys can understand is being stupid. So game on. It's ridiculous, they're ridiculous.
Okay, I have fifteen. No, go ahead.
All right, I'll just stand right here.
We made time. No, if you would, just please step to the mic.
So I, my name's Sarah. My name's Sarah Spero. So I, I wouldn't say that I'm advocating for the bullies that might be making this. But I'm wondering, are we in concern with their mental health as well? Because I do believe that a lot of times, children act that way or say things because they themselves are being bullied, maybe they don't handle it as well. I think accountability needs to be a lot on parents, and you guys can't do that. And I know that you've asked for help. But what accountability we can do, I suggest you do. I do have three students here, each eleven, ten, and nine. Are you in line? Eight. There's no peer session in line, but they're not allowed to use the bathroom. People standing from the bathroom. So I just want to make sure that you have that straight from students who don't transition through class. But I do know a kid who was suspended from the middle school for saying something to some bullies. And I talked with this children clearly for that case. And it's hard to determine the cases. Again, I have a junior, I have older children. My one oldest kid was actually on a list at middle school, and they found that the girl, I guess, brought some weapons. And I thought it was handled all right, but I do think that their, we shouldn't suspend them without help. I think that we do need to look at their mental health as well. And if parents want to speak to that other child's parents, is that something you guys can do, like mediation?
Yeah, I see they can do that.
But is that something you do? Because I feel like if I could be in that situation, I'd be like, I'd talk to that parent, you know? Because I think you can tell a lot from somebody's parents. Is attention, are they wanting attention on TikTok for making a list? I don't know. So, I don't know, I do think that people who are acting out should get help with mental health too.
And we do, we have these disciplinary hearings with them. That's something that we strongly advise and encourage. And sometimes when they do get expelled, I make it a condition of their return. I let them return maybe a few days early if they will get the help that they need. And document that and demonstrate for us that they've done that.
So the parent has to.
The parent has to.
But you will give resources?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
This is Andy Bridge. First, I'm gonna start by saying thank you to board. We have like lots of issues, I'm sure, all the time. It's difficult sometimes to go beyond listening, learning, changes. The problem I want to address to you and ask you a question to, how true it is, is the comparison to a thing we know that I've just heard. A few months ago, I started picking up my granddaughter on his school. And what I noticed was, well, Rebecca, I noticed that my daughter and her husband, my son-in-law, were having problems with my grandchild wearing her coat to school. And they were always getting in confrontation about how bad the weather is. We do have variants, COVID isn't completely gone, we have variants of it. And recently, you've heard from professionals that it's attacking the respiratory system of students, younger kids, more so than adults right now. And so that's a concern. And I know they were arguing with her, and she'd make excuses for her, God, it was that. We thought like, there's other parents having the same problem. Well, we argued with her, and then I got involved. And I said, next time I pick you up, you better have your coat on. Well, she listened to Nana, and she had her coat on. However, and she's blocking up and thinking, my God, there's a lot of students out here with no coats on. What's going on here? And then I discovered that, and I want to know, because this may be fact or may not, that's one here I want to ask you. I was under the impression now, when the eighth graders got transferred to this school system, because I guess it couldn't accommodate the size of the eighth grade anymore at the middle school, they transferred here, but they didn't transfer to accommodate them with lockers. Is that the reason why all these kids are coming out in this bad weather? Because they have no lockers to put into their clothes into?
No, ma'am. In fact, most of these lockers that you see around are not used. Most students carry book bags, and for years, students have not wanted to go to their lockers. And so the lockers, if you request a locker, we'll give you a locker.
Assigned a locker right off the bat?
No, because students just don't use them. And so then if they're left open, so we assign them to students that are left open, people put things in that shouldn't be in there, or if we had a bomb threat, all of these lockers would have to be searched. So if students aren't using them or don't want to use them, we usually seal them off so that they can't be, you know, someone can just dump stuff in them.
Okay, and I don't want to really interrupt you, but.
They can certainly have a locker, if you want a locker, if your student wants a locker, they will be given a locker. There's plenty of them.
Do our remaining high school students, the actual high school students, do they have lockers?
If they want one.
The only thing they want.
Right, because most students, like I'm saying, they all carry book bags. They have all their stuff in their book bag, and they don't want to have to go in a locker between classes. So they just carry everything in their book bag. And that's gonna hold for years.
Here's the problem.
They don't.
They don't want to carry a kilt. I know it's a common problem. And with the health risk that we have right now that we need to take serious, I'm sure the board listens to that. We have children on their own. So I'm not gonna attack you guys. This is a difficult situation for everyone, and I understand that. And what I'd like to see, maybe because we're women, so maybe you can encourage them and say, you need to have a locker. Because that's why they're not taking their coats with them. It's too much with all the, like, book bags and the heavy books and the folders. They, you know, there's a problem. Now, if you don't have enough lockers to accommodate, I mean, a lot of students that came from the middle school to here, there is a company called Utility Weapons. So if there isn't enough.
My daughter's in eighth grade.
Uh huh.
She will not wear a coat. She doesn't want to carry it around.
It's a common problem.
Right, I've talked to Dave Heil about it as well. I told her, you're getting a locker, I don't care if you get a locker and all your friends, put your coat in the locker, but you're wearing a coat. She, she's like, I'm not, I'm not doing it.
Can't you make it mandatory? Because it's.
But, well, maybe you can make it mandatory, it doesn't mean they're gonna take their coat to school.
Well.
And I truly, I truly, like, I get it. I get, I argued with my daughter about it day in and day out.
It's common.
However, to walk from the car door to here in a matter of thirty seconds, it's not, they're not gonna get sick from that. They're inside all day.
Well, that's.
I allow it as a parent, so I guess it's.
I know that the risk of the variants and everything, and I've attended a lot of conferences with health professionals, and you can get it quite easily, it's in the air, you can get it. So why not, as a school system, just be cautious and provide them a locker? I know when I went to high school.
If I provide my daughter with a locker, she's not gonna use it.
But the thing is, they're all walking.
You do have a choice.
Okay, so what we have to.
There's one available.
Is there a way that we can say, you have to have a locker, this is it?
The parent can tell them that.
Well, why do the parents have to tell me? Well, why would the parents have to tell me? When we went to school, we got assigned to the locker, so it's just that simple. If you have them here, they're not being used, why? Make sure you're signed, let's encourage them that way, they'll use them.
They won't.
I don't think that they would not use a locker if it's already given to them. Don't give them a choice. Our kids don't make healthy choices anyway.
Obviously, my sixth grader has a locker at the middle school and does not wanna wear her coat and does not use her locker, carries herself around with her all day long. It's something with the times, and I believe, I'm with you, they wish they would wear coats. It's something with the times now that it became very uncool to wear a coat. We actually talked about it at the last board meeting. Somewhere along the way it became not cool. So the other morning, she gets in the car and it's thirty-three degrees, and I was like, honest to goodness, child, it's, it's freezing, where's your coat? But, didn't know. Now, yesterday she wore it, yesterday she was cool. And this is at the middle school, they're all given lockers, they all have them, and she does not go to her locker, she lugs her stuff around with her all, it's by choice.
And I believe that's why it's a weird thing.
So we're having the same issues.
I see all those students come out just sweatshirts.
Yeah.
It's probably, there's a common problem here, but.
So I don't think mandating them to have a locker would fix it.
I say, why can't we try it? Okay? It's an option, why can't we do, they're there, right? They're not being utilized, why not just say we're issuing you a locker? And let's take it from there. If it doesn't work, what's option two? We don't just offer it to them anymore, but let's try it during the winter school year because we do have these variants that have to take serious, and it is attacking the children specifically with the respiratory system. So as a school system that's responsible, because you guys have a lot of things that you, issues each one, they're challenging, I see it. I served on boards, and one of them was alcohol and drug addiction, and that needs to be taken seriously too. And yes, there is a federal problem, daytime, nationwide, it is difficult, there's a special address that always was. So, my, my suggestion is, let's take a new approach. Let's assign them lockers. They use them or they don't, but you've covered your area, okay? And you addressed the problem. Let's see if it works, if it doesn't, then we know where to go for the next school year. But we still have winter now, and these lockers are not being used, so let's assign them a locker. That's a pretty simple change. It's not difficult. That's what I'd like to see you do, as a responsible school system. And I know you're all very serious, and I know you're trying to do a good job, and it's difficult, and all these parents who's serious about all their problems, that you have to listen to each other. But I thank you for that time that you gave me, and the time that you've given these other parents. But I would really, easiest suggestion is assign them a locker, and let's do a test. This is here to be the test, and see if they use those lockers. And let's see if they bring one else. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Out of fifteen, adjournment to executive session. Recommend a resolution for the board to move into executive session to discuss specialized details of security arrangements.
I'll move.
One second. Call roll, please. Mr. Haidman.
Yes.
Mrs. Innis.
Yes.
Mr. Johnston.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp.
Yes.
Motion approved five-zero, and the time is seven oh five PM.